Auwee! Bouba, bouba, bouba di, di, di. Bouba, bouba, bouba di, di. Bouba, ma, bouba, ma, chris. Bouba, cha! Aba la, la, sa di, ga, wa, du, so, so, ma, tu, ya, shaka, di, sa, o, she, vou, ma, Afrika.
Au, bughe, man, Afrika.
Vouga Afrika.
Au, bughe, ma, kandeni.
Au, bughe, ma, kandeni.
Au, bughe, man, Afrika.
Vouga Afrika.
Au, bughe, ma, kandeni.
Au, bughe, ma, kandeni.
If your valleys, rivers and mountains turn into burial ground, what comes to your mind to me? Tell you what I see, I see misery.
Au, bughe, man, Afrika.
Vouga Afrika.
Au, bughe, ma, kandeni.
Au, bughe, ma, kandeni.
Au, bughe, man, Afrika.
Vouga Afrika.
Au, bughe, ma, kandeni.
Au, bughe, ma, kandeni.
Aï, moutu, bani, nomu, yini.
Bouche, le, va, yindula, ah. Come on, ma, mofé, la, la, sa, ba. Je, je, tu, sa.
Au, bughe, man, Afrika.
Eri, ya, ya, ya!
Au, bughe, ma, kandeni.
Ya, ma, ya, ya!
Au, bughe, man, Afrika.
Adults and children are affected by TB and HIV. But children face different challenges than adults when it comes to taking medicine. It can be difficult to swallow tablets. The taste can be unpleasant. And it can take a lot of time to administer medicine to small children. So mothers and caregivers who give children their medicine have to find creative ways to make sure children take medicine as prescribed. Here, the caregiver needs to give TB medicine to the child. And it's too big to swallow whole. So she needs to crush up the tablet with a spoon.
Sorry, sorry.
It is not easy. And it can be even more difficult if the child needs to take different types of medicine in the same sitting. Most medicines for children have a bad taste, making it tough for children to take and making it difficult to administer the proper dose. We cannot accept the status quo. Together as a global community, we must work toward developing safe and effective medicines for children that can be administered easily. Ensuring those medicines are accessible at the clinic level for all families who need them. Children need and deserve child-friendly medicine.
I'm Dr. Nandito Sugandi, and I work for ICAP at Columbia University. And I've also been a member of the Pata family for several years. I'm here today, pre-recording this session, to talk about treatment optimization for infants and children living with HIV. This is a pre-recorded session in preparation for the launch of Pata Reel tomorrow. And Pata Reel will be reviewing cases, engaging with peers, accessing experts, and learning lessons. For those of you in West Africa, Pata Reel will launch at 14:40. For those of you in Southern Africa, Pata Reel will launch at 15:40. And for those of you in East Africa, Pata Reel will be launching at 16:40. For now, we're going to talk about some of the key questions when it comes to optimizing pediatric ART. However, I encourage all of you who are listening to bring your most burning questions and cases to the Pata Reel launch tomorrow. Where we'll start with, though, is why are we still talking about pediatric HIV treatment optimization? I feel like we've been talking about this for a long time. And why aren't we there yet? What do we mean when we say that? Well, this is a picture of where we are now. So this is the rates of viral load suppression comparing pediatrics zero to 14 years to adolescents and adults 15 years and over who are getting ART in 15 of the AIDS-free focal countries. This is data from 2019. And as you can see, the green bars here represent children zero to 14 years. And the orange bars represent adults 15 years and over. Adolescents and adults 15 years and over. And as you can see, the orange bar show that we're reaching higher levels of viral load suppression compared to children. And yet, when you think about our targets, we actually have quite a long way to go. We need to get to 95% viral load suppression for all populations. It does not count if we just get there for adults. We need to get there for children as well. So very quickly, I just want to talk about viral load suppression and how optimal ART can lower viral load. On the left side of the screen, you can see that there is a cell that's been infected by HIV, and it's creating more HIV virus. But we also have different classes of ARV drugs: NRTI's, NNRTI's, protease inhibitors, and integrase inhibitors. These drugs work, these are classes of ARVs, and they work to stop the virus from making more copies of itself. And when we talk about a viral load, what we mean is the amount of HIV in the blood. And when there are ARVs in the blood, the amount of HIV decreases significantly. And so when we say viral load suppression, what we mean is that the level of virus in the blood is so low, we can't detect it anymore. So very quickly, I just also want to discuss the difference between ART and ARVs. So ART or antiretroviral therapy is really, we're talking about three different ARVs being given together in a regimen. And we know that giving these drugs together is the most effective way to keep the viral load suppressed. However, we also have to remember that it's not just one drug that we're giving, but it's a combination of drugs. So an individual ARV is just one molecule or one drug in part of a regimen. And the reason why I'm explaining this is because there's a difference between adult and child ARVs. As you can see on the left, we have a young woman who's taking one tablet, and that's her regimen. Her ARVs are TLD, which is tenofavir, lamivudine, and dalutegravir. It's available in a single tablet, and she takes it together. But on the right hand, you see, we have children who are in different shapes and sizes, and they may need different formulations. So that's another distinction that we need to think about, is that while we know that an ART regimen are three different molecules being given together, and the ARV is each type of molecule, we also know that ARVs come in different formulations. So it may be the same molecule, but it will come in a different form. So for example, the ARV lopinavir-ritonavir, which is part of the preferred regimen for pediatric patients, comes as either a liquid, a tablet, or as LPVR pellets or granules, depending on which country you're in. So that's just a quick review. And we want to move on to, when we talk about pediatric HIV treatment optimization, what do we mean? So what are the characteristics of optimal ARV formulations for children? Well, we want to make sure that these are formulations or drugs that are recommended by the WHO, who has already reviewed and evaluated them for safety and efficacy. We also want to make sure that they're quality-assured products available. And so the drugs that are in country, we know that these are quality drugs and that they'll work as expected. We also want them to be user-friendly. And when you think about who the users are, this includes healthcare workers like you. And we want to make it easy to prescribe. But we also want to make it easy for caregivers to administer these ARVs. And we want children to feel supported and feel like adherence is easier because they can take their ARVs more easily. Many of you have experienced stockouts or shortages of drugs at your facilities. And really, we need to think about supply chain. So we also want drugs or ARVs that are easy to transport, easy to store, and easy to distribute. And we want to make sure, because children come in different shapes and sizes, that we have some dosing flexibility. And in the formulations we choose, allow for the widest range of dosing options. Now, cost is not as much of an issue for programs in pediatrics because the population of pediatric patients tends to be relatively low. However, this absolutely is a consideration for country programs when they're planning out what ARVs to buy. So we're working on making these more affordable. So just to review some of the advantages and disadvantages of different ARV formulation, for a long time, we used liquid ARVs. And the advantage of these are liquids can be swallowed even by the youngest infants. And dosing can be adjusted by just giving different amounts of that ARV. However, there are a lot of disadvantages to using liquid ARVs. These bottles of liquid are heavy. They take up a lot of storage space. Some liquids need to be kept cold. So that's a problem where there's no refrigeration. And older children just don't like taking large amounts of liquid ARVs to get the complete dose. There are other liquid ARVs that taste very bitter. So they're not easy for children to adhere to. And then some caregivers also have difficulty measuring out the correct amount. So liquid ARVs, we've moved away from using these. They're rarely used in treatment these days. But they're mainly used now in PMTCT for infant prophylaxis. So they still have a very important role for preventing mother-to-child transmission. Dispersible fixed-dose combination tablets are another innovation that actually has really expanded our ability to scale up pediatric ART. Dispersible fixed-dose combination tablets are a combination of different ARVs together, and they disperse in water. So because they are in tablets, they're easy for prescribers to prescribe because we don't have to calculate the dose. We can just prescribe the correct number of tablets. They're easy for caregivers to administer and to store and to carry because they're in a small bottle like regular tablets. But they can either be dissolved in water or just be given regularly, in chewed or swallowed. So they taste relatively pleasant. So they're easy for children to take. And actually, because they're not so bulky and they don't take up as much space of liquid, it sort of streamlines and simplifies our supply chain. But we don't have that many pediatric dispersible FDCs. We used to use stabuting and 3TC and nevirapine. But these are not optimal ARVs anymore because we know they have significant side effects. We do have fixed-dose combination dispersible tablets for the combination of AZT and 3TC, for AZT, 3TC, and nevirapine, and for abacavir and 3TC. However, I also want to point out that AZT, 3TC, nevirapine is also a suboptimal regimen, and it's been phased out of use. So over the years, we've had quite an evolution of recommendations for pediatric first line. When the first WHO recommendations were published, we had a variety of NNRTI-based regimens that were recommended, including some that we no longer use. And LPVR was actually reserved for second-line ART. In 2010, we began to recognize that children who had been exposed or infants who had been exposed to ARVs through PMTCT would have higher levels of NNRTI resistance. So we started with the recommendation to provide LPVR for first line in children who are less than two years old who had been exposed through PMTCT. In 2013, we still had a number of recommendations for pediatric first line. But again, we recognized that LPVR was actually a better treatment compared to nevirapine or efavirenz. And so LPVR became the preferred third ARV in pediatric first line for all children under three years. And now we've changed. This is now almost 14 or almost 15 years since the first WHO recommendations. And we finally moved beyond the recommendation to use lopinavir-ritonavir. And we're moving into the era of dalutegravir, which is now preferred for all populations except for neonates, those under one month of age. But LPVR is still an alternative when dalutegravir is not available. So when we say that, I know at this point, dalutegravir in some cases are not available. So we want to know what options are available to improve treatment for infants and children living with HIV now. So as we heard earlier from the WHO, we have new WHO-recommended first-line treatment. And this is really a simplified recommendation at this point, where abacavir 3TC and dalutegravir are the preferred first-line regimen for all infants and children. I know it says children here, but it really means infants and children because when we talk about neonates, we're talking about infants less than one month of age. So what's the rationale for using abacavir 3TC? This is something that I think we get questions about quite often because we used to use AZT 3TC as the preferred first-line NRTI backbone. So one of the reasons why we use abacavir 3TC is because it contributes to rational sequencing, which means our switch from first to second line is better. And the reason for that is abacavir belongs to a class of drugs similar to tenofavir that we call non-thymidine analogs. Whereas AZT and the older drugs, stabuting, are known as thymidine analogs. And we know that if you fail and develop resistance to non-thymidine analogs, a thymidine analog may actually work better for you. So what that means is we prefer abacavir in first line because even if you fail on your abacavir-containing regimen, we still have that backup of AZT that may actually work better in second line. The other reason for using abacavir is the simplification of dosing. AZT is given twice daily. But with abacavir, it can be given either twice daily or once daily. We also now have a double-strength abacavir 3TC dispersible fixed-dose combination of 120 and 60 milligrams. So this actually reduces the pill burden for children. We can give fewer tablets. And again, we can give it either once daily or twice daily, as these dosing tables show. This means that we can make sure that the NRTI backbone that we're giving is harmonized with whatever third drug the child is taking, whether that's LPVR that needs to be taken twice a day, dalutegravir that's taken once a day, or in some cases even efavirenz that is also taken once a day. Now, we would prefer dalutegravir because we know that this is a superior alternative to both NNRTI's and PIs. And this is data that comes from adults. However, the HIV virus is the same. So what's effective in adults is very likely going to be just as effective in children. And we know from several studies that dalutegravir is a superior drug. So what can we do to optimize treatment regimens now for children? So if our preferred regimen is abacavir 3TC dalutegravir, we now have the optimized fixed-dose combination tablet of abacavir 3TC 120 and 60 milligrams, which could be used to dose across weight bands. And while I don't show that in this dosing table, this again can be dosed once daily or twice daily. We also now, very recently, have the new recommendation to use dalutegravir 50-milligram tablets in children who are weighing more than 20 kilos, which is fantastic because a child reaches about 20 kilos somewhere between the ages of six and eight. And we know we have far fewer younger children and more older children. So many of these children can now take dalutegravir 50-milligrams, which is the dose we also use in adults. But we also, we need something for those children less than 20 kilos. And very recently, in June of this year, the FDA announced that there is now approval for dalutegravir 5-milligram dispersible tablet. So this is the first integrase inhibitor that's available as a dispersible tablet. And it can be used in children from three kilos onwards or four weeks of age and upwards. Now, I want to point out that though this is currently approved and available for children, this is not the formulation that will be scaled up in most countries. There is also a generic 10-milligram scored dalutegravir tablet dispersible that's expected to be approved by the FDA at the end of this year, so very soon. And this will be bioequivalent or similar in formulation as the Tivicay, which is the branded name of the currently available dalutegravir 5-milligram tablet. So I think sometimes this is a question that comes up, is when we talk about the drug manufacturers, there's actually, why is there a difference? Why are we pointing out that there's a formulation that's available from an originator company or a formulation that's available from a generic? And I just want to, for those of you who may not be as familiar with these terms, the originator company is the company that actually invests in the research and development to develop these new medications. So they put a lot of time and resources into the studies that are needed to develop these new drugs. And they own the intellectual property. So they own the rights on how to make this drug. And for that reason, I think because there's so much investment, these usually tend to be somewhat more expensive or more expensive compared to generics. Now, generic companies, on the other hand, are now allowed to produce essential medicines, including ARVs, even if there's a patent, even if the intellectual property rights are owned by the originator company. And this is in order to make sure they're available in low and middle-income countries. The point is to keep the costs affordable. So they produce at scale, which means they're producing large amounts, and they're competing with each other in order to sell their product. And so this contributes to keeping the costs lower for programs. But we also want to make sure that these generic companies are just as high-quality as those that are coming from the originator companies. So these still also go through the approval process. And at this point in time, in November, dalutegravir 10-milligrams, the generic formulation, is under consideration for approval. So we're still waiting for that, but we hope to have that very soon. So where we are now, and I think this has caused a little bit of confusion. So I'm hopeful that this will clarify. This is, in some sense, a way we want to understand what pediatric dalutegravir looks like here in early November 2020. We know that, some of you may know, that there are other formulations. There actually already is a 10- and 25-milligram film-coated tablets, which have quality assurance, as well as the adult 50-milligram tablet. Now, these are film-coated tablets that were first submitted for approval in pediatrics. However, when you look at the weight that they were approved from, and we now consider that 50-milligram, the adult dose of dalutegravir is safe and effective in children greater than 20 kilos, we actually don't need these anymore. So we can kind of forget about these for now because we actually have something that's more widely available and at a more affordable cost for most of these children. And then we're coming across, and now we also have this 5-milligram tablet that can be used from three kilos onward. So we actually have dalutegravir in formulations that can be used from infants weighing three kilos up through adulthood. And again, this 5-milligram tablet is currently available from the innovator. And we're waiting for the generic 10-milligram score tablet that should be approved very soon. And this is a table just to show that the dosing is available across all weight bands. And the 10-milligram is really expected to be just a double strength of the 5-milligram that's currently available, that can then be used to dose from three to 20 kilos. Now, for those situations where dalutegravir 10-milligrams is not yet available or 5-milligrams is not yet available, LPVR is still an alternative. And again, we've had a recommendation to use LPVR in young children for many, many years. But one of the disadvantages is that we've had problems with the formulation. We've had LPVR liquid, which was for a long time the only formulation that could be used for young infants and children. But it required a cold chain, and it tastes very, very bitter. It has alcohol in it. So it's relatively toxic, but it's also heavy to carry and hard to store. And so we really struggled with scaling up the use of LPVR liquid, even though it had been known to be a preferred and more effective drug for children for many years. On the other hand, we've also had LPVR heat-stable tablets that could be used from 10 kilos onward. However, one of the limitations of this was that it cannot be crushed or split because if there's, the way that the lopinavir and ritonavir are put together, if that's disrupted by breaking the tablet or crushing the tablet, it will not work as well. And I think this is a very critical point that we've really struggled with when we've tried to introduce LPVR. Luckily, we now have better formulations. We have both LPVR 40/10 oral pellets as well as 40/10 LPVR granules. So these are now sort of a better option. And they're a heat-stable alternative to liquid that we use for children. LPVR oral pellets were approved by the US FDA in 2015. And LPVR granules were available in 2018. So this was a few years ago. And so you may wonder, why haven't we scaled up all the way yet? And that's because we really did have some problems with manufacturing. And so we've learned over time that we needed to focus on what the production is and how much do we need, which I think we've gotten a lot better at. And right now, we've scaled up the manufacturing capacity or the production of these products. So we had much more availability. And I think it's some country, most countries have adopted either pellets or granules. And they're really, sort of, again, they're the similar drug and they're the same amount of drug, but they're just in different formulations. And so at this moment, for children under 20 kilos, most countries are now in the process of scaling up optimal pediatric treatment using abacavir 3TC 120/60 tablets and LPVR 40/10 pellets or granules. Next, we're going to talk about how you're going to select the best first-line regimen for children in your clinic. So again, we have optimal ARVs for all age groups from infants three kilos upwards to adulthood. For those less than 20 kilos, we have abacavir 3TC dispersible tablets. We have LPVR pellets or granules or even LPVR tablets in the pediatric side, which is 100-milligrams and 25-milligrams. For those 20 to 30 kilos, we again can still use the abacavir 3TC dispersible tablet. But we can now combine it with dalutegravir 50-milligrams, which is widely available. And once adolescents reach 30 kilos, they can actually be transitioned to the optimal adult regimen of tenofavir 3TC and dalutegravir, otherwise known as TLD. And this is a regimen they can stay on for life. So really, when we look at what we need, there's actually just five formulations that we need to provide optimal ARVs across all populations. We've also, again, because we were using tablets or fixed-dose combinations, instead of measuring out milliliter by milliliter, we have weight band dosing. So here's an example now of how we can dose abacavir 3TC across all the weight bands up to 30 kilos and as well as where lopinavir-ritonavir granules or pellets or lopinavir-ritonavir tablets can be dosed up to 20 kilos, after which dalutegravir 50-milligrams can be used. But we also may be asking, in addition to starting patients, what about patients who are on older regimens now? There's guidance from that from the WHO, though I would also check with your national program. So for those children who are currently taking AZT 3TC nevirapine or AZT 3TC efavirenz or abacavir 3TC nevirapine, these are regimens that are no longer preferred for first line. But again, we've simplified the recommendation. It's quite easy to weigh a child. And if they're less than 20 kilos, you can change that child to abacavir 3TC lopinavir-ritonavir. For those children that are 20 to 30 kilo, between 20 and 30 kilos, they can be on abacavir 3TC with dalutegravir 50-milligrams. And for those 30 kilos and above, they can be transitioned to the adult regimen of TLD. Well, abacavir 3TC efavirenz, we still have many children on this regimen. And partly, that's because this is a previously preferred first-line regimen for children. And so this is where the recommendation may differ by country. However, the WHO recommends that those children who are stable, meaning they have viral suppression and they're doing well on their current regimen of Abacavir 3TC efavirins, if they're less than 20 kilos, we can actually keep them on, on that regimen until they get to 20 kilos. And the reason for that is, we know that Abacavir 3TC efavirins, while it may not work for all children due to increasing rates of NRTI resistance, for those that it does work for, it's a once-daily regimen. And otherwise, we would be switching them to a lopinavir ritonavir formulation, which may not be as easy or convenient to take. Now, again, this differs very much by country based on what drugs are actually available. And for, again, similar to the recommendations from above, those children who are weighing 20 to 30 or over 30 kilograms can be transitioned to a Dolutegravir-containing regimen. And for those children who are currently on a lopinavir ritonavir-based regimen using either Abacavir 3TC or AZT 3TC, for those less than 20 kilos, they're already on an optimal regimen. You may want to consider changing the AZT 3TC, or AZT 3TC to Abacavir 3TC if you want to reduce the burden. But otherwise, because they're both dosed twice daily, it's okay to leave them as long as they're stable on their current regimen. But again, once they get to 20 kilos, they can be transitioned to Dolutegravir 50-milligrams and a once-daily NRTI backbone, whether it's Abacavir 3TC or Tenofivir with lamibutin. And I want to point out that this is what we can do in terms of transitioning patients now. And that's partly because we are still waiting for pediatric 10-milligram Dolutegravir dispersible tablets to become more widely available. And we anticipate that this table may change once that happens. But for now, these are the recommendations for how to select a regimen for, for a patient in your clinic today. We also note that LPVR, we understand that it's not the easiest formulation to give, even though it is a better of. And so we've developed over time and lessons learned additional new counseling support for how to administer LPVR pellets or how to administer LPVR granules. These are available right now in both French and English. And we've also developed a set of counseling cards and, and steps for teaching young children how to swallow tablets. So this enables children, after the, after the, they reach a weight of at least 10 kilos, to learn how to swallow LPVR tablets whole. So it uses different head-positioning techniques, and it starts with small particles like seeds or things that will be readily found in resource-limited settings. And hopefully, this allows us to transition from using pellets or granules, which may be quite difficult for older children to take, because it involves quite a high medication burden, to transitioning to taking the tablets, which are easier to swallow, but must be swallowed whole. So the next question we have is, when will we have better ARVs for children? As I mentioned earlier, the five-milligram Dolutegravir dispersible tablet is already approved for infants and children weighing three kilos or more from the originator company. And we're waiting for the generic dispersible scored 10-milligram tablet, which could also be used from three kilos onwards, and that's expected to be approved quite soon. There's a second formulation that's also under review. And this is the 4-1, which is a combination of Abacavir 3TC, lopinavir, and ritonavir. So this is not a tablet, but it's a granular formulation, similar to LPVR granules, but also sort of like the pellets in that it's contained in a, in a capsule. And we're hoping that we'll have approval of this formulation from two weeks onwards. So this would may allow us to treat very young infants, but would also give us an alternative for those children who are unable to tolerate Dolutegravir. And so we have, we're waiting for the approval of these new formulations. But it really comes down to when will these be available in your country? And this is where I think we need to understand what the process is. So I'm showing a timeline here that takes us through 2021. And currently, where we are now, at the end of 2020, Dolutegravir 50-milligrams is approved for use in children 20 kilos or more, and TLD is approved for children weighing 30 kilos or more. We also have an increased manufacturing capacity for LPVR pellets and granules. So we don't have such limited supply. And we actually can, we can in-country make sure that there's access to pellets or granules for all children living with HIV. Now, the 4-1 has been filed. There were some questions that came up, so it's been refiled, and we're currently waiting for SRA approval. And the Dolutegravir 5-milligrams, now it was filed and it was very recently approved. It takes some time between the time for approval for that drug to then get to country. And so what we're anticipating is that, that Dolutegravir 5-milligram, if we are to use it, may be available starting in 2021. However, I also mentioned that this is from the originator company. And what we're actually waiting for to scale up is the Dolutegravir 10-milligram tablet. And so now this has been filed and we should have FDA approval soon. But again, it's going to take some time for this to be, to, to be introduced in country. And so again, I want to have us to have a realistic idea of when these drugs will be available. And that's to say, we shouldn't wait to optimize treatment now, but we do know that better drugs are coming. However, as we've learned this past year, life is uncertain. So I just want to point out that all these timelines are subject to change. So in conclusion, to improve pediatric HIV treatment and increase viral load suppression in infants and children living with HIV, we need better pediatric ARVs. Infants and young children living with HIV have limited options compared to adults for effective and safe treatment that can be taken easily. But these, there are improved options that can be scaled up now. So this is what you should be doing in your clinics today. And there are even better options expected in the coming year, but we shouldn't be waiting. And again, I want to stress that we can, we can and we should be doing better from this moment onwards. Thank you. And once again, I encourage you to join in for the launch of Pater Real tomorrow to share your real-world cases with peers and some of our pediatric experts to discuss and how do we, how do we really do this in the real world? Please also feel free to email me with any questions, and we look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abigail and I am a nurse. I am here to demonstrate to you how to administer lopinavir ritonavir pellets. Pellets are packaged in a capsule and are administered as prescribed by the doctor. Take a clean tablespoon and set it on a plate or on a dish. You can also use a small container or a cup. Put a little food on the spoon. The food should either be semi-solid or liquid, such as porridge, yogurt, or other foods available to you. Remove the number of capsules prescribed by your doctor and place them on a clean surface. Take a capsule, hold it vertically, then twist it in opposite directions while pulling gently to open it. If using semi-solid foods, pour the required amount of pellets on the spoon. Pour some more food onto the spoon to cover the pellets. Feed the baby with the food or liquid containing the pellets immediately. Follow up with more food or liquid to ensure that they swallow all the pellets. Repeat until all the capsules are finished. Finally, check the child's mouth to ensure that no pellets remain. It is advisable not to pour large quantities of pellets. Pour about one or two capsules at a time. Make sure that all pellets are on the spoon and that no pellets fall off. For all caregivers, make sure you give the pellets with food or beverage that the child prefers to take and will swallow without chewing. If the child is resistant or vomiting, try to administer fewer pellets at a time. Ensure no pellets remain in the mouth, as it will develop an unpleasant taste after a short time. Capsules must be opened to administer pellets. They should not be swallowed.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for your wonderful questions as well. Sorry, I'm just trying to look at the questions and, and go through. I, I see there was a question from Dr. El-Pedias in Cameroon, sorry, about adolescents. And I think this is a really good question, that there's a problem of mass, mass loss to follow-up or poor retention in adolescents in particular. You know, I think this is one of those issues where unfortunately, the best medication in the world can't solve this problem. It's, it's really an issue that needs to be dealt with at the service-delivery level. And I think there's been a lot of actual, there's been a lot of work. And I think some cases and things that will be presented during the conference that will share some of the lessons learned about better engaging adolescents and, and helping them to follow up. And so I, I do hope that, you know, we, we continue to talk about this, because it is something that needs to be addressed. There is, there are a couple of questions here in, in Portuguese. And I think one of them is about the Dolutegravir 5 or 10-milligrams, which currently are not widely available. The 10-milligram generic formulation is anticipated to be approved shortly. And that is the one that will be scaled up and likely will become available in country at the beginning of 2021 or mid-2021, depending on when your country places an order. And there is another question here about countries preparing for the accelerating and preparing for the rollout of Dolutegravir 5-milligrams. And again, I just want to point out here that the Dolutegravir 5-milligram dispersible tablet is one that's made by the originator company. So it's not the one that is, most countries will adopt and scale up. It will be the 10-milligram scored dispersible tablet, which is the equivalent of the five-milligrams, but it's a double strength and can be split to dose across all weight bands. And that one should be available. And in terms of preparation, I think one of the things that we've learned from past transitions is that we really need to learn from what we've done in the past, what works and what also has not worked. I think we've had a number of good lessons about preparing too early or preparing, or, or, you know, conducting the trainings and then having a delay before the rollout. So I think understanding the timelines is really critical. And knowing that, you know, life is not perfect and things happen and, and being able to maintain that flexibility, but also having good communication and establishing good communication networks with your health facilities will also help in terms of making sure that healthcare workers get the message when Dolutegravir for children is available. There's another question here about interventions to support children with high viral load and what is the most, what are the most causes of high viral load among children? And to that, that's again a great question, because we see that children more often have higher viral loads compared to adults. There are a number of things that could be done to support these children. And some of it comes down to understanding why there's viral failure. And that could be, you know, for the most part, it's due to poor adherence. And adherence is usually, I would say, nine times out of 10, the answer. And, and really, one, one of the first things to do is to work on supporting adherence. Now that said, we also know that there's high degrees of resistance, particularly to, to ARVs like niverapine and efavirins. And so this is actually one of the reasons why we suspect that many children are failing when they're on these regimens containing NRTIs, and we're switching them to lopinavir, ritonavir, or Dolutegravir. Luanne, should I keep, continue moving down, or there are a lot of questions coming in? And I'm, I'm trying to keep up with all of them. Luanne, can you hear me? Hello?
Sorry, Nandita, I'm here. I'm also, the people are asking questions in the chat and the Q and A, so it's just a little, yeah, it's just a little.
No, these are, these are really great, great questions. I'm hoping we can get through most of them, and it's, I think, faster if I, if I can go through.
Absolutely. Just continue down. I sort of posted one or two. So if you carry on moving down, that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, okay, no problem. So the next question is from Sandra about the failing on LPVR-based regimen. Is, and if it's because of poor dosing and the difficulties of administration. And again, I think this is a good point. There, there are actually two points here. One is about inaccurate dosing. And I think one thing that we've seen, and it may have actually been on the increase because of COVID, is that many times, children do not have an updated weight in their, in their charts. And if we're prescribing based on their weight and they've grown, they actually may be underdosed. And so one of the things I encourage you to do in your facilities is to make sure that every child has a recent weight documented, so that you can make sure the child is dosed appropriately. In terms of the difficulties of administration, I do think that we're far from having the perfect formulation for children. And while the LPVR pellets and granules are definitely an improvement over the syrup, I, I do think we have to acknowledge that there are challenges around this. But a lot of this can, I think, if caregivers understand the appropriate techniques and as we saw in the video that was just shown, their demonstration videos, there are also counseling materials and different techniques to help make it easier for caregivers to, to provide either LPVR granules or pellets to their children. And there's another question here about the powdered form of LPVR. So the LPVR granules, which has to be mixed with porridge or another soft food before giving. And, and the question is actually of whether or not there's a risk of, of some child who is not HIV-infected getting that same porridge. And this is another, this is another point to raise about what, when you mix the soft food and how much of that soft food should be mixed into the LPVR. And so as opposed to preparing a full bowl of porridge and mixing the full dose of LPVR pellets or granules into that bowl, the risk there is, as Martin pointed out, that somebody else may take some of that porridge. There's also other risks that the child may not finish the complete dose if they don't finish all of their porridge. Or that, you know, over time, if the, if the granules or the pellets are in contact with the, with the porridge, it loses the masking, the coating on it that, that hides the taste. So it becomes very bitter. So the best way to administer this is to advise caregivers is, you know, prepare the soft food, porridge or soup or whatever else it is that's being given, and put a small amount aside and just give it, sort of mix the one capsule of pellets or one sachet of granules with enough food that just that child can take in one or two quick bites. So it would have to be sort of mixed in separately from, from preparing the, the larger meal. There is also, I, there's something about taking, living with HIV, taking Dolutegravir and having threats around their lives. I'm not sure if I understand the question entirely. I don't know, Shadrick, if you would like to clarify. And, and please feel free to unmute yourself and, and we can discuss.
Yeah, I don't think Shadrick can unmute himself, Nandita, because we're on a webinar. So Shadrick, if you could just try and clarify that question, was it, it, it's just not very clear in terms of the threats you're talking about? Are you talking about resistance or side effects? If you could just clarify that, thank you. And Nandita, do you want to maybe move on to the next question? And then I'll, I'll continue watching as Shadrick gets back to us. There's a question there on addressing transition to the caregivers. And when can these new, and when would you imagine these new innovations and medications will make their way to Africa, specifically Kenya?
So in this, the issue of transition, and I don't know if you're speaking about sort of the transition of sort of providing instructions to caregivers or the, explaining the, the transition from one medication to another to caregivers. And, and so in, in terms of that question, I think it's really important to make sure I think it's really important to make sure there's time for counseling of caregivers. One thing that has started to emerge is more linkages between facility-based services and community-based services. This is again something that will come up later in the summit. But I do think that there needs to be a lot of support for caregivers as they're prescribing or as they're administering these medications to their children every day. And although at the facility level, healthcare workers cannot be there with these caregivers every day, we do know that there are many community structures and support systems available. There are, you know, OVC programs that are in place in the community or other faith-based organizations that may be running. And I think that one of the things that we need to start thinking about is how do we better link to services that can support caregivers directly at home? Because I do think that there are still challenges and caregivers definitely need support. They also need to be prepared for changes in medication. So one thing to also make sure they understand is that the dose of medication for their children will change as their children gains weight, which is one reason why it's important for them to bring the child back to the facility to get an up-to-date weight. But also just to prepare them that, you know, to know that these medications are changing and we're getting new medications that are better, that will work better against HIV or easier for their child to take. And I think that that's one message that we can share with caregivers to also help prepare them for transition. And in terms of when these new innovations and medications will become available, you know, right now, there are a number of steps that have to happen before a medication reaches a country and reaches a patient. So it has to be approved by regulators at sort of the... The FDA is one regulator, but countries also have their own system for making sure that the drugs that come into country are high-quality drugs and appropriate for distribution. And then they have to be distributed to the facilities. So I think that we anticipate now that within the first, you know, within the first half of 2021, we're hopeful that dolutegravir 10-milligrams will be approved and will be able to be manufactured in sufficient quantities and sent to various countries for distribution to the facilities. And this is the plan. At the same time, I think we also know that lots of unexpected things happen and we always have to be prepared. So I think it's helpful to be prepared, but also we need to understand that there are many different steps that happen before a drug reaches a country. There's another comment here about changing the taste of medication. And absolutely, I hope that, you know, lopinavir, ritonavir in particular is a very bitter drug. And we're hopeful that once dolutegravir becomes available, that the taste of that will not be so, will not be so strong or so bitter and we'll be able to taste mask it much more effectively and hide that so that it does not taste so bitter to children. And then there's one question again here about body weight and dosing versus nutrition. And absolutely, I think malnutrition is a serious problem. And as we see, like even though we can't predict, looking at a normal growth curve, exactly what a child living with HIV who has not been getting proper treatment will weigh because very often these children are underweight or malnourished. And so that is something I think that has to be paid attention to in addition to just, you know, regular dosing of the medications. And so, number one, I think we have to address some of the malnutrition and nutritional issues that many of our children face. And then in terms of actual dosing for ARVs, I mean, I think it is very tricky when a child, particularly if a child is recovering from severe malnutrition and there's rapid weight gain. There definitely is a need then for there to be careful adjustment and monitoring of the dose of ARVs. And there's very little evidence actually for how this should be done. So it is a delicate balance, as you mentioned. However, the drugs that we are using are far less toxic than drugs that were used earlier. So in terms of that concern about slightly, about overdosing or a child losing weight and then not being able to take the same dose, we're not as worried about that if that should happen. So if you have a child who is dosed into a new, or gains weight and is transitioned to a new dose or even a new regimen or drug and that child loses weight, another thing to remember is these drugs are far less toxic. So we don't have to worry about that as much. But secondly, because the body also gets used to managing the drugs. So the liver and the kidneys are the organs that actually process drugs and they've already gotten used to the drugs at that higher dose. And so we don't recommend decreasing a dose if a child loses a little weight and crosses out of their current weight band or regimen band. Sorry, I'm just going to go through another few questions, but I don't know, Luanne, if there are any others that you wanted to address.
Yes, thanks, Nandita. I mean, maybe also just to tell colleagues that tomorrow at the same time, we will actually be having some cases presented. And Nandita will also be there as part of a panel of experts. And today, really, we just wanted to share some updates with you. So I am a little worried because Quan and Dita's answering all the questions just on her own. So I'll ask her maybe to just do one or two more. And then if colleagues don't mind, if we could carry some of these questions into the case consultations tomorrow. Because I think some of these questions, there's a question specifically from Martin around a child, et cetera, with a particular weight band. And I'm hoping, Martin, if it would be okay, if we could hold that for tomorrow because I think that would really fit well into the case consultations. There's a question here, Nandita, around young female patients living with HIV and young mothers fear for cervical cancer screening. Yeah, I mean, I think it's just asking about the best approach utilized to motivate this group. I mean, I imagine that's really just providing access to information, correct information so that we can, you know, minimize levels of fear. So it's really sort of breaking down those kinds of unfounded fears, which are often just sort of built on misinformation. So I think it really is about maybe, you know, working with other young peers in terms of being able to sort of de-stigmatize going for cervical screening and getting some of the peer supporters to also, you know, be role models in terms of also regularly themselves going for cervical screening. And there's a question here, Nandita, around some cases EID. We know this in terms of coming out very late and the harm initiated exposed by babies on art. And at such instances, then stopping medication if the baby is then tested negative. So if I might suggest maybe that we take that as the last question for this session. I'll have a look at the others, Nandita, if you want to have a go at that one.
Sure, absolutely. But just scrolling through the rest, I really think these are fantastic questions. And we're really hoping that we can, you know, the launch of Pata Real will give us a chance to address some of the specific cases and approaches that may be helpful. But I really think we need to take that forward and have... I really wish we had more time for discussion because it's very helpful to also better understand what challenges are being faced by providers and the clinics. In this issue of EID results coming out very late, now this is a huge problem. And absolutely, we want to start infants on treatment as soon as we know they're HIV-positive. And in some cases, we, again, we have drugs that are less toxic. There's no drug that's 100% safe. But one of the other things that has come up is, you know, how do we know which babies are more... We know with PMTCT and with very effective regimens that we have far fewer positive infants. But we do need to find a way to address those that are at high risk of being infected. And absolutely, I think there have been discussions about things like early treatment or presumptive treatment for those children who are very likely to have been HIV infected. And this may be because the mother did not start treatment before delivery and had a very high viral load or, you know, or was, the infection was not caught in the mother until very late. And so there are some of those situations where at this point we're giving enhanced prophylaxis for children who are at higher risk. But this issue about initiating an exposed baby, even, you know, it's a question of whether or not you are doing more harm than good if you're giving it to all children or all infants who are exposed to HIV. And many of them have a very low risk of actually becoming HIV-positive. We also know that in terms of testing and confirming the infection after a child has started early ARVs is not that simple. And so I think there are a lot of things that need to be balanced here about the actual risk of giving drugs to the majority of children who would otherwise need them versus, and then figuring out later which ones are actually, actually had been infected. And so I think there's still quite a bit of discussion in this area, but you're raising a good point that we do want to make sure we give treatment as early as possible. And right now, as much as we do recommend providing testing at four to six weeks of age, we know that the return of results often takes much longer, if they come at all. And so that's something in the meanwhile, I think we can focus on, is making sure that we expedite the sending of those tests and return of results and acting on those results in the meantime. There's another question here about swallowing tablets. And I just want to point out that we, there has been a set of counseling cards about teaching children, young children, to swallow tablets. I'm happy to share that link with the group. I think it was in the presentation. And we'd love your feedback as well on whether or not this has been effective for you. Luanne, I'm not sure if we should keep going or what the best thing...
Yeah, no, I think, Nandita, if I could ask colleagues, there was a question from Lydia and Martin. And if they're comfortable with that, I'll actually take those questions down and make sure we bring them into tomorrow's case consultations because I think they would fit really well there. And I think you've sort of addressed this one, this sort of last one, obviously, which goes a little around the whole tablets, around the real need for when we'll have a fixed-dose combination, one steady regimen for young children. So maybe if you could just answer that one, Nandita, and then really, hugeest thanks to you for making time available. I know that you weren't actually going to be on live for this session and it was just really going to be for tomorrow. So we really do appreciate your time. And colleagues, thanks for all your participation today. I know there were some technical glitches wherever we were in the world, but let's hope tomorrow, things will go a little easier and we have all got used to the system a bit better. And I will definitely take some of these additional, really helpful and good questions into tomorrow's session. So if you could just maybe answer the FTC one, Nandita, and then we'll call it today.
Of course. And Luanne, thank you for inviting me to be part of the session. For Dr. Atang Galase, the short answer to this question is we are hopeful that abacavir 3TC and dolutegravir will be available in a combined fixed-dose combination tablet in the future. However, again, these types of, this type of drug development is, as much as we are trying to move faster and learn from what we've done in the past to make this happen quicker, it's just not here yet. So this is something that is actually in progress and we are trying to make that fixed-dose combination available. However, it's hard for me to give an exact timeline. And I think this is why I sometimes stress it's important to know what's coming, but it's also important to know what we have available now and how do we best use that? Because if we're not using what we have now, those kids will be gone before the new, better drugs arrive. And I also wanted to say, you know, the longer answer to that question is keep asking these questions. I think that I'm very encouraged by the fact that people have joined in at such a difficult time to talk about pediatrics in children living with HIV and really asking how do we do better at this? And I do think that attention, you know, in the global community goes here and there based on the latest emergency. But it really is wonderful to be part of the PATA community that keeps asking these critical questions of how we can do better. So I want to thank everybody for listening in and for their questions. And some of these are really, give us things to think about. And look forward to seeing you tomorrow at the PATA Real launch.
Thanks, Nandita. Thank you, colleagues. Look forward to seeing you all again tomorrow. Have a very good evening and yeah, we'll see you tomorrow. Travel safe.